It's a final session for the week. Yeah.
Well, there might be one before the exam, but.
No. No more. I take experience.
Realize my voice was not in the recording, so once again, I'm gonna say hello and welcome to session twelve of MTH two forty. We were, I was just saying that um this is the final one in the course. Okay. Hello, everybody. Well, you know, thank you for coming to this one. This is, you know, it's gonna be, gonna be nice. Today, we're gonna talk about four point three and four point five, which is partial derivatives. Derivatives. Every video starts with me just mumbling words. Partial derivatives and um the chain rule. For multi variable. Four point seven isn't on. Four point seven is not on this test. It's in the exam, but it's not on this test. On the exam guaranteed. Of course, yes, it will be there for sure. So um yeah, this is, this is the plan for today. Any questions before we get going? Any like, you know, preliminary stuff? Anybody have anything?
Uh-uh.
No? Okay. Sounds like we're good. Um, so if you want my notes, you can go to tutor announcements. I put my beautiful website link there, so you can go to my website. And there's tutor.ca slash notes and you can take a look at my notes from there. Or uh they're also in homework help, so you can go there and yeah. Okay. So for uh four point three, well, let's start here. I mean, so last time we were talking about multi variable functions and limits using multi variable functions, right? What does a limit mean? And then also what is a multi variable function, right? These are all important things. So we're gonna talk about derivatives now in multi variable functions. So um before I start, I think the idea of partial derivatives, you have to have a little bit of a different view of what a derivative is. Uh unless you already have this view of what a derivative is, in which case you're all set. But if I, okay, since we have a few people here, let me ask the audience. Uh what, if you were just describe a derivative in one sentence, what would it be? Become multiple answers. See. The rate of change of a function. Okay. With respect to a specific variable. Okay, rate of change of a function with respect to a specific variable. Okay, let's get another one.
It's very excited, by the way.
It's very what?
I was teasing him to say that's very excited, like when something is good, where do you start?
Oh, okay, okay, yeah, yeah, thank you. Very good, very good. But what's, what's your definition of the derivative?
It's basically the same thing.
Same thing?
So.
Does anybody have any different one? Let's try to get one more.
Like anything is just gonna center on back to something like speed of or change or something.
Yeah, rate of change is of course a very good idea to have, right? Okay, so uh you know, the idea is, is that a lot of people have the idea of a derivative being, you know, they call it the slope of the tangent. Right?
That too, yeah.
And so it's okay to think about it as a slope of the tangent when you're in one variable functions. And it's also semi okay to think about it in partial derivatives too. But this is essentially a specific case, or not a specific case, but a uh a way of looking at this thing, right? So this is, this is kind of the answer. I was kind of, I thought someone would say so, yeah. This is kind of more of a specific way of looking at this more general idea, right? So in general, I think the best way to think about a derivative is, the derivative is uh a function's sensitivity to uh changes in an input variable. So a one variable function, right, a one variable function, if I draw any kind of squiggle like that, right? And I say, well, and I say, this is like this point right here. This is the, this is the x axis. This is x equals five or something, whatever. So if I ask, what's the derivative at five? I'm essentially asking, you know, I'll choose a different spot for five. I'll choose, right, choose right here for five. So if I'm asking, what's the derivative at five? I'm asking, you know, this is my input variable x. My output variable is the y axis, right? My output variable is the y axis here. So when I the idea, the idea of a derivative in general is that you can zoom into this function, right? If I were to zoom in and zoom in and zoom in, it would approximate a line, right? It would approximately just a line and that line would have some sort of slope. So if we look here, if I were to make some small tiny change to the input variable, remember remembering sensitivity. So if you made a small tiny change, call that delta x. And you're looking at the resulting small change in the output, right, delta y. This is always gonna make a line, right? It's gonna make it the size of a triangle. And in general, delta y is always gonna be some multiple of delta x, a times delta x. Because it's a line, so they're linearly related, right? This number is the derivative at five. We call, usually call it, we usually rearrange this to say delta y over delta x is equal to a. And if you take the limit as this delta gets smaller and smaller and smaller and the y gets smaller and smaller, you call that d y by d x. And that's a, right? A is just whatever the, whatever the, you know, the slope of the it's not really good to think, I guess slope isn't really the word, but it's, it's whatever the multiple of the change in x is to get that change in y. Right? So one specific way to look at it is if you were to draw a tangent line here, what would that slope be of that tangent? That's the one specific way to look at it. But this is sort of a more general idea of what a function's derivative is at some point. It's this constant that relates delta y to delta x. And if you take a limit as those go to zero, you get the derivative. Right? And it's a rate, it is a rate because we have uh the change in y as a rate, you know, compared to the per change in x. And so we're gonna extend this to multi variable functions in exactly this way, right? Exactly this way to think about it because uh you can imagine tangents and stuff like that, right? And it's just good to think about sensitivity to change because that's essentially what is happening here. And let me just move my notes here so I can see them too. Okay, so if I were to give you a multi variable function, right? Let me actually get a multi variable function here. And I'll just plot some random one. I don't know. I don't really have an example. Right? So if I have this multi variable function here, right? Close that. Then I can think of, you know, like if we're trying to find the derivative here, right? What are the input variables? So this is f of x equals x y. So the input variables are x and y, right, x and y. So there's two small changes I could make now. I could make, so on one variable, I could make a small change in x. I could make a small change in the negative direction too, but then we get the negative of the delta y, so it doesn't really, they're the same direction really. And so here, we would just have, not just have, we would have two input variables that we could do a small nudge to and find the ratio of the change, right? So if this was the x axis here, if this green, stop spinning, if this was the x axis, this green line, right? And I could imagine looking from this side here, right? It gets kind of confusing to look at. You know what? Let's do a better example. Let's do x squared plus y squared. Yeah, let's do this, right? So you can imagine if the green line is the x axis, going to look right on the side of it, right? Then what, can I get it to flatten out? Okay, that's probably the best I can get it to be. There you go. Uh, come on. Okay, that's the best I can get it to be. So we will just have the accepted like that and I'll take a similar picture like this. So if I have this function here, and this is my x axis. And this coming out towards me is my y axis, okay? Then what I can imagine is I can imagine taking a small step in the x direction, right? Not in the y direction, just in the x direction, calling that delta x. And asking, what's the resulting small change called delta y in the height of the function, right? It looks like a one variable function because this is just a parabola like this. That's just a parabola. And so that's the specific case of this function though, right? That's the specific case. So this is f of x y equals x squared plus y squared. And so this ratio, this delta y is gonna be, again, some constant multiple, it's gonna be, there's a line that connects these two. So it's gonna be linearly related to delta x, right? And then we have, we can rearrange this again, delta y over delta x is a. And we have our, again, our derivative at the point here, at this, at zero, zero, what's our derivative? You know, you can take the limit now as that goes to zero and d y by d x, not y, sorry, this should be z. The height of the graph is z. That's a mistake I made. The height of the graph is z, so that's why that should be dz instead. So uh dz, dz, it's just that we're used to calling it y. Um, and so we can take the limit as uh this delta x goes to zero. And we could essentially get dz by d x. And this is what the partial derivative is, right? It's the partial derivative at a point. And you call it a partial derivative because then I could go because, because I call it a partial derivative because, partial derivative, because just by knowing this, I couldn't tell you what the derivative would be for a small step in the y direction, right? I would not know just from looking at that, uh dz by dz, dz by dy. I wouldn't, I couldn't tell you anything about this. I couldn't tell you if it's a, I mean, it's gonna be a because it's the same, it's x squared plus y squared, but I'll just call it b, it's some other value. And just from this, I don't know what it is, right? So this only tells part of the sensitivity to change, right? And usually, well, I'll get to in a second. If I look at um the, the, you know, from this other side, it's the same graph essentially. But this is now the y axis and this is the x axis, not this, but this green line is the, is the x axis. I'll just highlight that. X is right there. And so now I can ask, you know, the same question as before. I could say, okay, well, to us, for a small delta x, what is the resulting delta z? Okay, and that, that's gonna be linearly related because there's a line there. So delta z is gonna be some b times delta x. This is our derivative at the point. I just call it, you know, take the limit as uh delta x goes to zero. Delta y, sorry, I keep messing up the variables. That's supposed to be delta y. I'm making a small step in the y direction here. Is that what you're gonna ask?
Yeah, I was gonna say, cause yeah.
Yeah, bringing a small step in the y directions, it's called delta y. And so we, we can do delta z by delta y is equal to b. Take the limit as delta y goes to zero and we just call that dz by dy equals b. And now collectively between this equation and this equation, we know the derivative at the point there. We know the two partial derivatives. Right? So this was a two variable function. It had two partial derivatives. Derivatives, okay? And so um if I had a three variable function, then I would have another input variable that I could make a small change to. Right? I can make a small change here and see what is the resulting small change in the output variable. So I don't have three partial derivatives here because there's not another input variable. There's not another thing that I can do a small nudge to, right? To get a small change in the output. So collectively now dz dz by d x and dz by dy are the partial, so I said this was a and this was b, whatever, some values. These are the partial derivatives of f. So I say z equals f of x y. These are the partial derivatives of f at zero, zero. At, at the point we were talking about right now. So how is this? Any questions about what I just talked about here, comparing it to single variable? Sending it to two variable?
So I could think of the a and b, that's literally just the, the unit rate, right? Like whatever it would have been.
Well, it's just a constant. It's just whatever the derivative is here, right? It's whatever the derivative is here.
Yeah, okay. Add that, is it, but is it like, add that specific point, cause would it, cause like if, in a, like a, like in a parabola, the, the constant would ironically change for each point here.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just saying, right, right here, I was just evaluating at zero. See, I was just making a small change at zero, but if I did the same thing, I'd have a small change, delta y in this case. And it would create a resulting small change, delta z. And then this would be the derivative at whatever that point is, two maybe. At x, at y equals two. Right? X equals.
Y approaching two?
What'd you say, what?
Is that, since you took the limit is at a y approaches zero, that'd be a y.
Yeah, y approach, delta y, well, delta y is approaching zero. Delta y approaches zero because it's the change. But this length is just gonna approach to this point right here, which is two. A y of two, right? Okay, so um these are the partial derivatives. I usually write them differently though. So since they're partial derivatives, this kind of means linear, not linear, sorry, a single variable um derivative. So when you have partial derivatives, you write it as a, a, a different symbol, so it's the partial symbol. So partial z over partial x, whoops, is equal to a. And partial z by partial y is equal to b. Some people also pronounce it di, di z by di x, di z by di y. All, all fine. You can call it funny face if you want to. It doesn't really matter. Um, and so these are the partial derivatives. You write it like this. And there's another way to write it. So the, the final way to write it is f sub x of x y is equal to a, f sub y of x y is equal to b. Right? So this is honestly probably the best way to write it for most, most times is, is you do uh the sub in the bottom. Uh this just means you took a partial derivative with respect to x once. You took a partial derivative with respect to y once and you got these values. So before we move on, let's figure out how to find this partial derivative, you know, graphically, not graphically, I mean uh algebraically. So I can just write the definitions here. If we just quickly recall what the normal derivative is. D, d y by d x was the limit, I should say, f prime of a was the limit as h goes to zero of f of x plus h, sorry, a, a plus h minus f of a over h. Uh yeah, that looks right to me. Okay, so yeah, there's nothing wrong there. Okay, so this is the, you know, the definition of the single variable derivative. Single variable derivative. And the partial uh, the partial derivative and for multi variable functions is not gonna be very different. So if I'm looking for, if I have some function, f x y equals z, right? And I wanna know, well, what's f x? So we don't really say f prime because that because here there's only one thing the derivative could be. It's f prime is the derivative. You can't really say f prime because then you don't know if you're saying, for multi variable functions, if you're saying the derivative with respect to x or respect to y. Cause those are two different things. The sensitivities are different there. So, well, they're not always different, but they usually are different. So we say f x of x y is equal to uh the limit as h goes to uh, yeah, as h goes to zero of the f x plus h, whoops, comma, y minus f x y over h. So essentially, I'm treating y to be just constant. It doesn't change between here and here, right? But x is getting a small nudge. It's getting a small plus h here, right? And I'm comparing it to when it didn't have it, just the normal f of x, of x y. And I'm gonna take the limit as h goes to zeros. This is very similar to regular ones, to the uh single variable derivative. And similarly, this will be the limit as h goes to zero of f of x y plus h minus f of x y over h. Very similar. It's just that y this time is getting a nudge and x is being held constant. But this is an x one, x two. This is x one, x both times, right? So yeah, these are the definitions. Uh I probably won't do any derivatives using the definition uh because I, I mean, unless people want me to, I will. But uh I doubt that will be the test question, I'm gonna be honest, so unless, unless they really want us to work, but which is possible actually, but um I don't, I don't think that will be the test question. Uh so any questions about the definition here, about parts, this is the definition of partial derivatives?
No, but I was just saying, I think if they gave us questions using the definition, it kind of restricts in how hard they made the question, which is also what they don't want to do.
Yeah.
Cause like, it's kinda hard to do it with like roots and.
Yeah, it, that's true. That's true. They wouldn't give us a difficult function to do it like this, right? Or uh, oh, maybe they will, but probably not.
It's unlikely.
Okay, so how do you go about actually calculating what the partial derivative is? So I can use the limit definition. Let's use a better way of doing it. So like I said over here, with these pictures, the x axis, in this picture, the x axis doesn't matter, right? The x axis isn't affecting us here. So it's in a, in a sense, I'm holding x constant, right? I'm holding x constant, just like over here, I'm holding y constant because it's kind of coming towards us and that's not affecting the picture here. So when I have a function like, let's say, f of x y is equal to x squared plus y squared, right? And if I wanna take the partial derivative of f with respect to x, let's say, then I can just take the derivative with respect to x, just the normal derivative with respect to x. What do I do with y? Well, y is a constant and I just treat it like a constant. So this would be two x. Constance, derivative of the constant goes away. So partial f, partial x is two x. And similarly, partial f, partial y is gonna be, well, two y. Cause this is a constant. You're taking the derivative with, with respect to y, the x's go away. And we just take the derivative with respect to y normally. And that's all. You, you can kind of think of it like, you know, we're uh, we're looking only at the vertical trace. Only at the vertical trace, you know, through whatever point you're looking through, just in general, you're looking at the vertical trace. And so you're taking the derivative there. And yeah. So in this case here, you know, the partial derivative of f, so the, those, you know, the rate of change of f with a small nudge in x only depends on x. And here it only depends on y. But in a lot of cases, you can have that it depends, it still depends on x and y. So if I go, you know, I might have examples. No, actually, I don't have examples there. Just wanna find some example of doing a derivative. Let's just do this here. So if I have, let's do another example, f of x y equals e, e to the x plus y squared sine x squared y. Okay, I have this function. Then let's try to find what, you know, the partial derivatives are. So f x of x y and f y of x y. Let me just have a sip of my water quickly. So the derivative with respect to x, I take the derivative normally. I just treat y as a constant. So while I'm gonna have to use product rule here, right? Because um this is a um a product of functions. So the derivative of the first one with respect to x, yeah, I'll write it out fully. The derivative of the first one with respect to x of, well, you know what? Yeah, okay, e to the x plus y squared times the second one. I'll just write this one out fully and I won't write the rest of them out fully. Plus the first one times the derivative of the second one. Still with respect to x, right? So this is gonna be, okay, well, it's gonna be e to the x plus y squared. And what's the derivative of, so the chain rule here is gonna have to say that we're taking the derivative of this with respect to uh x. So well, what's the derivative of that with respect to x? It's one. So I just multiply by one, that's fine. It's gonna be sine x squared y, okay? Plus e to the x plus y squared. Now the derivative of this with respect to x is gonna be cosine x squared y. And now the derivative of the inside with respect to x is just two uh, two x y. So the y is a constant. It stays. It's, it's not being differentiated, but the x squared is. So no product rules needed here. It's just, it's just a constant. This is if you had a two, right? And that's it. Okay, so that's the partial derivative. You know, I can also write that as partial f, partial x. And that's that. You can factor it, whatever, do whatever you want, but that's, that's the answer. Um and let's find partial f, partial y, fy. Why? So I'm not gonna write it out fully this time. It's just gonna be the same thing. In fact, you know, I'll just copy and paste it from here because it's gonna be the same deal. But this time, instead of taking the derivative with respect to x, we're just gonna take the derivative with respect to y. Right? I should check it. I'm doing this right. I mean, I am doing it right, but just gonna make sure my answer for the last one was right. Yep, good. Um, don't wanna make a mistake. So we're gonna do the same thing, but this time you take the derivative with respect to y. So we're gonna have e to the x plus y squared now, times the derivative of this top thing with respect to y. That's not one anymore. That's two y. Times sine x squared y plus e to the x plus y squared, okay? Uh partial derivative of sine x squared y with respect to y. Oh, that's not gonna be too bad. It's gonna, it's gonna be cosine x squared y times x squared. Okay, any confusion about this thing here? How did I get an x squared at the end? If that's confusing anybody, let me know. I'll just say that taking derivative, you know, what's the derivative of um five?
Five.
Five of five x, the derivative of five x is five. So the derivative of x y with respect to y is just x in the same way that this is just five. And we just had a squared in the question. So hopefully that's good. Any questions? So those are two partial derivatives.
Yeah, wait, the first, on the second line is this, what did you differentiate this the first time around? Is it with respect to, cause I see you have two y. Oh, that's the, I'm confused.
Yeah, I'll let me separate this out for a second. That's where this is partial f, partial x. This is partial, whoops, that's a six, partial f, partial y.
Also, look, in the second line, it's actually from the last line, actually.
Yeah, this might be confusing. This is part of that.
Right?
Right? This is, this is just carrying on. I just, here I just wrote it in general. I just took the derivative. I'm just writing the derivative symbols, but here I took the derivative. Okay, um, so yeah, there's that. Well, I just realized I'm so low in the camera. Tilt the camera down a little bit there. Okay, good, better framing. So yeah, uh I'm, I am recording, but I'm just gonna check again. Yes. So there we go. That's our partial derivatives. Now let's move on to um higher order, sorry, higher order. Higher order partial derivatives. So uh for example, if we had, I could use this example, but that would be a little bit tricky. So let's say this is the example that Horowitz used, so maybe we should use it. I think I'm gonna use something different. Okay, let's say we have this function here. This is our new, new example. Okay, let's say we have this function. Um I want it to be something good though. Okay, that's fine. So f of x y is equal to four x squared over y plus y squared over two x. Okay, this is our function. Let's find what f x is, so x y. Well, that's just gonna be okay. So the derivative of this with respect to x, now um y is a constant. And derivative is, you know, linear over addition, so it, it distributes over addition. So we can just take the derivative of each of these things with respect to x separately. And so that would just be four over y is a constant. So this would just be eight over y x, or I can say eight x over y. Plus now y squared over two is a constant. I just need the derivative of one over x. Well, that's negative one over x squared. It looks like that. So now we have a new function, f x, which, oh, you know what? Let's find f y too, x y. So with the, with respect to y, now I'm just taking the derivative of this with respect to y, four x squared is a constant. So it's just gonna be negative one, a negative four x squared over y squared. Now the derivative of this with respect to y, well, one over two x is a constant, so it's just gonna be uh y over x. Looks right to me. It's just gonna be y over x. Okay. So now we have two new functions here. Each of these I can, so I'm gonna draw little arrows like this. So I have this function like that, and it is also, you know, goes like that, so this function, you know, breaks apart into two partial derivatives. I can break these ones apart into two more partial derivatives. Right, cause I can take, this is a new function. What is the derivative of, the partial derivative of this with respect to X and Y? Well, that's our higher order partial derivatives, and so our next one, we're gonna call it F X X. So that's taking the derivative of F with respect to X. And then taking the derivative of that function again with respect to X. Okay, so F X X of X Y is equal to, okay, let's take a look. Um, so derivative of this with respect to X is. Um, so eight over Y is a constant, so this is gonna be eight over Y. Minus. And this is gonna, uh, Y squi- negative Y squared over two is a constant, so I'm taking the derivative of X squared, one over X squared. So that's just going to be um, plus. Y squared over. X cubed. Okay. And there is our next partial derivative. Yeah, any question?
Maybe of four, somewhere there.
Let me check here.
Uh, also, when we did the derivative for the X squared at the, like, shouldn't it be two Y squared over X cubed?
Here?
Cause would we have X, wouldn't it be like, I don't, can't see where F X is, oh yeah, cause it's two X squared at the bottom. And then if we, when we did the chain rule for that, we get like. If you flip that, the numerator, you get two X to the negative two, so then you'd pull down negative two.
And then there's a two in the denominator.
Oh, that's true, yeah.
Okay, I'll, I'll write it out if people are having confusion, I'll, I'll write it out here, so I'm just taking the derivative of um, taking the derivative partial, it's really, well, no, it's partial, there's two variables still. So the derivative of this expression with respect to, uh, with respect to what, X, yeah. So of uh, negative Y squared over two X squared, so. Um, well, negative Y squared over two X squared is a constant, so I'm gonna take that out, negative Y squared over two, sorry, X squared is not a constant, X squared is what we're taking the derivative of. So negative Y squared over two is a constant, then I'm gonna take the derivative of that. Of one over X squared with respect to X. And so this is gonna be negative Y squared over two times two over, uh, actually, negative two over. Uh, X cubed. And then cancels, 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 cancels. Get Y squared over X cubed. So does that make sense? Are we good? I'm gonna erase this if everybody's good, okay. Take that as everybody's good, whoops.
Yeah, it's, it makes sense enough.
So, um, there we took F X X, but we can also take uh, the derivative of this with respect to Y. Right, we could do that just as easily. So I will write that down here. Um, this is gonna be F X Y, so the derivative with respect to X and then the derivative with respect to Y is what we're doing, so X. Y, so I'm taking the derivative of this with respect to Y this time, so it's gonna be uh, negative eight X over Y squared. Eight X was a constant there. And then this is just going to be negative Y over X squared. Cause the two comes down, it cancels. Okay, so F of X, X and F of X Y are two new functions that we've just, you know, discovered. These are the higher order, the second order partial derivatives. Okay, so these are the second order. Partial. Um, and these are the first order partial derivatives. These are the first order. Right, so you take the, that includes, that includes this one here, right? Okay, so then let's look at, uh, let's also look at this one. Kinda separate this out. This F Y, well, I can also take the derivative of this. Uh, with respect to X now. And Y, but I'll do X first, so Y X, F Y X of X Y. Right, so the derivative with respect to Y and then X. That's gonna give me, okay, well, let's take a look. Uh, with respect to Y, we have here, then with respect to X. So negative four over Y squared is gonna cancel, I mean, it's, it's gonna be constant, I mean, not cancel. And then this is gonna be negative eight X over Y squared. And now this is gonna be negative Y over X squared. Okay. And anybody notice anything, right, right away?
F of X Y and F of Y X are the same.
Yes, exactly. F of X Y, well, uh, the, F X Y is, uh, F X Y of X Y. So the partial derivative with respect to X and then Y is the same as the partial derivative with respect to Y and then X. That won't always be true, it'll be true in a certain situation, which I'll talk about right after I find this next derivative. Um, but it'll almost always be true, because the, the condition is very general. So let's just quickly find what F. F Y Y would be, right, derivative of Y, derivative with respect to Y, I mean, um, twice. So this would be uh, of, of X Y. So derivative with respect to Y now, this is gonna be, I think it's gonna be eight X squared over Y cubed. I think that's right. Makes sense to me. And then derivative with respect to Y on this one, okay, well, that's just gonna be plus one over X. The Y, one over X is a constant, derivative of Y is one with respect to Y, so there we go. Here we have. Yeah?
No, I'm trying to figure, how did you get uh? The X squared, but I was from, we take it from F Y, right, kind of got mixed up, cause I thought it was like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This, you're saying here, this one?
Yeah, no, I realized because at first, at, at first you're like, your image is blocking the function that you're taking it from, so it's like, how do you get X? But yeah.
Yeah, I'm not taking, I'm not taking the derivative of this, I'm not taking the derivative of this, I'm taking the derivative of this up here, yeah, exactly. That's what, that's what it is, yeah. So yeah, okay, so that is taking higher order derivatives, does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, wasn't it always a case where the final, like, X, F X Y and F Y X should be the same?
Not always, and I'll talk about what the condition is, so I'll do that now, uh, so there's. There's a theorem, uh, which I'll just put on the screen, I mean, essentially, I don't have to type it all out, I have a nice thing right here. So Clairau's theorem says that if F of X Y is defined on some open disc D in the input space containing some point. Um, A B where the partial derivatives are both continuous on that disc, then you have. Um, uh, uh, that F of X Y of A B is equal to F Y X of A.
So essentially they have to be in some kind of space where.
Essentially, you have to be on the interior of a domain. Interior of domain. And continuous. Which is most of the time that we're talking about functions, uh, well, not, I mean, unless you're talking about discontinuity, in which case you talk about discontinuous things and. You're talking about boundary stuff, which you're, you're there sometimes. So this is like, these are the conditions, interior of domain and continuous. Um. Then F of X Y will be, sorry, F sub X Y of X Y will be F sub Y X of X Y. For the points.
Wait, you just made some mention to discontinuity, or you're talking about?
I just mean like, I just mean like, these conditions aren't always true, but, that's a bad bracket, whoa. Um, these conditions aren't always true, but in most of the cases that we talk about, they're gonna be true.
Okay.
Okay, um, so. That's essentially it, from four point whatever, five, I think, or three, four point three. Um. One thing. Nope, that's essentially it, I think, let me just check my things here. Uh, there's also partial differential equations, but we really don't have to worry about those at all. I don't even think I'm gonna mention them, no way they're on the test, I'm gonna be honest, so.
Uh, partial differential equations?
Yeah.
All different, are they, I actually forget.
We never, we don't learn how to solve them, we don't learn how to solve them, so I'll just give one example here. So like, a partial differential equation is a differential equation that uh, contains uh, partial derivatives. So for example, if we have some uh, function U of. Uh, U of X Y T equals two. No, I should, well. I'm gonna, I'll just copy, I'll copy this out for a second, I'll paste it back in. We have a differential equation, which is, I have some function, you know, I have some function, U of, this is what I'm trying to say, U of X Y T. And. The partial differential equation is uh, U T equals nine U X X plus U Y Y. Right? So this is a partial differential equation, because it, the, you know, it's asking a question, it's asking what function. Whose uh, partial derivative with respect to time is equal to nine times the partial derivative uh, with respect to X and then X again. Plus the partial derivative with respect to Y and then Y again. Right? Which is very hard to solve and is what, you know, university math majors and higher level math things and research has done in solving these kinds of things. Uh, this particular example is the heat equation, um, and we'll learn about that. But for now, like, you know, we don't actually have to know how to solve this, the question that was given from Horowitz is just verify that this is a solution. Two sine X over three sine Y over four, E to the negative twenty-five T over sixteen. That's a solution to this, you can check it by taking the partial derivative with respect to T, X twice, Y twice, subbing that into here and showing the left side equals right side. I don't think I'm gonna go through the trouble, not something we're gonna be asked to really do in this course, that's not what this chapter is about, I highly doubt it's on the test. Or the final exam. Uh, potentially on the final exam, I guess, cause it does make you take some partial derivatives, so. Maybe. But uh, yeah. So other than that, that's the end of three, uh, four point three. Any questions before I move on to four point five? Hopefully you're comfortable with partial derivatives now.
Most of that is fine, but just to clarify what you just said about that final thing, the. Um, partial differential equation.
Yeah.
You said Professor Horowitz acts to just basically do the double derivatives for each and then plug it in. That was essentially it.
That's it, essentially, take, make, you know, calculate what U X X is, U Y Y is and U T. And then sub it into the equation and just show that left side equals right side.
Oh, okay.
Right, simplify some way. And show that.
Some, okay. As, at first I didn't see any T in the original equation, so I was like, how are you gonna get U T? Just twenty-five T, alright, I'm good.
Okay, so that is the end of four point three, so now we're in four point five, which is the chain rule. Right? So.
Oh, wait, oh, before we start this, probably good to mention, uh, implicit differentiation also applies in uh.
In four point five, uh, four point three?
In both, in both.
But it's not taught until four point five, this is where, this is where the, yeah, it's in four point five.
Oh, cause there's some four point three questions that used implicit.
Yeah, that's true, actually, I do remember being confused a little bit, but the actual section on implicit differentiation, I'm quite certain, unless I wrote in the wrong section, but. Is in four point five, yeah, because you need to be able to do. The chain rule. In implicit differentiation, to like, get the formula for implicit differentiation, but I'll write it here too, yeah, so implicit. Differentiation. Okay. Differentiation. So. The chain rule is what we're gonna start with here, so if, if I just have a regular function, let's start with, you know, F of X. Equals um. Y. No, that doesn't make sense. F of X equals W. And W is a function of T. Is, let's say it's, I don't know, two T plus three, and this is W squared. I should say W of T. Squared, okay. So this is like a regular chain rule problem, if I were to ask, what's the derivative? Right? Oh, sorry, this is, should be of T. Now we're good. Yeah, we're good, this isn't W times C, this is W of T. So if I were to ask, what's F prime of T, right, or not, you know, maybe a better way to write it is D F D T. Right, then I would do the chain rule, I would say, okay, well, this is, I take the derivative of this thing. Right, this thing, uh, so the derivative of F with respect to uh, W. Right? So that would be, give me, if I write this out here, F prime, write this D F D T, D F. D T, it's gonna be two W of T. Times, you know, the derivative of this here, which is two. Right, so that would be the chain rule. Hopefully that makes sense, I'll write W prime of T. Right? Which would give me two, uh, two T plus three times two, hopefully I'm not confusing here, cause this is like a expanded way of doing the chain rule, but. If, if, if anybody's confused, just let me know. So in general, what I did. And I'll write it out here again. Just brought that down, that's fine, D F D T is, okay, so the uh, derivative with respect to W. Sorry, derivative of F with respect to W times the derivative of W with respect to T. That's what I did. This is the derivative of F with respect to W. D W. And this here. Is the derivative of W with respect to T, that should be an F, sorry. Right? And in a sense, you can just picture like, the D W is cancelling out and you just get D F D T. Uh, this cancelling out thing, uh, it's good to have that in your mind when you're setting up what you're gonna multiply, especially when you do the chain rule. Right? So what if I had a more complicated function, right, what if I had a function that was like? Um, let's see if I can actually just get an example here. And I'm gonna pretty much jump right to the general case, because I'd like, I like doing that, um, and I think that's more. Illustrative. So if I have. This function. I have this function. And it was, let's say, Z equals X squared minus X Y plus two Y squared. Where X equals four U minus three V, Y equals three U plus two V. So what do you notice? Okay, first of all, Z is a function of X Y, okay? So I'm gonna say, I'm gonna copy this again, in fact, actually, I'm not gonna copy this again. Z is a function of X Y. And X is a function of U V. And Y is also a function of U V. So if I were to try to take this derivative. Right? Always what you, you're, you're always able to do this, you're always able to put the um, X and Y in, sub it into this equation and solve. That doesn't, that's much more complicated usually than doing what we're gonna do with the chain rule. But just so you know, you're always able to do that. But what if, what if I was wondering, you know, what is Z, uh, partial Z, partial. Uh, partial Z, partial U. Say that. So the derivative of Z with respect to U. I gotta, gotta click the button on the phone quickly. So. Let's try this. I'm gonna have to take the derivative, so X is a function of U and V, but specifically, more importantly, U. So what I can do is I could take the derivative with respect to X. Of everything that I can take the derivative of respect to X to, and I call it partial X, partial, sorry, partial Z, partial X with respect. We keep messing that up. Partial derivative of this, which is Z, with respect to X. And then multiply that with the uh, derivative of X with respect to U. Cause I'm taking the derivative with respect to U here. Very similarly to how up here. We found, um, we did the derivative of the whole function with respect to the inner function. And then derivative of that inner function with respect to the thing that we're actually trying to find the derivative with respect to, so same thing here. I wanna know what the derivative of the whole function is with respect to U, so I'm gonna take the derivative of the partial derivative of the intermediate function. Multiply that by the, you know, the derivative of the intermediate function with respect to U. The difference is. That to really get partial Z, partial U. Here, we only considered X. Here, we only considered X, I have to add on partial Z partial Y and similarly D Y D U. And this is the derivative, this is the. So a really good way to think about this is a dependence tree, so let's see what depends on what, Z. In fact, I have, already have a diagram for it, so, may as well just use it from my notes. So here's a dependence tree, it's essentially asking, what's a function of what, so Y is a function of X Y. X is a function of S T, it's not S T, is it, it's U and V, so U and V, U and V, I'll do it, not black. U and V, U and V, hopefully that makes sense, that doesn't make sense, does it? U V. Okay, so if I wanna take the partial derivative of Z with respect to, let's say, U. What I do is I take the partial derivatives down the chain here. I got one chain there and I get another chain like this, right? So Z depends on X and Y, so I gotta take both those partial derivatives. And then X depends on U and V, but I only care about the derivative with respect to U, so I'm gonna take the derivative with respect to U. So you can see here, the derivative of Z with respect to X, times the derivative of X with respect to U. That's that one chain, right, plus this other chain, the derivative of Z with respect to Y, times the derivative of Y with respect to U. And I did that here and here. So that's how I got this general formula, so if I'm gonna do that now, D Z D X, partial Z partial X, I should say. Is um, well, it's gonna be two X minus Y, that's it, times. Times D X D U, D X D U, I guess it should be dy, I don't know, doesn't have to be, it's not a single variable function, sorry. They can be partials, so partial X partial U is just four, so times four. Plus partial Z partial Y is. Gonna be four, well, negative X. Plus four Y. Times partial Y partial U is three. So we know that this derivative is just gonna be eight X minus four Y plus minus three X plus twelve Y. So this is tw- uh no, uh this is gonna be five X minus eight Y or plus eight Y. And that's it, the partial derivative of Z with respect to U is exactly this amount right here.
Similarly, you have to plug in X and Y now to get it in terms of U or into.
Uh yeah, you can, you don't actually really have to have to, but yeah, yeah, I guess that. If they ask you to do that in the question, if they ask you to get the partial derivative just in terms of U and V, then you can't stop here. You just sub in five times X, which is five times uh four U minus three V.
We only fear, like, that is the actual final certification.
Yeah, yeah, three, it doesn't always ask you to do that though, and if it doesn't ask you to do that, I think you don't have to, but.
Sometimes uh simplification can be probably like pretty difficult with like roots or.
Yeah, exactly, it might be more complicated, so uh twenty four U, it's twenty four, right, yeah, plus sixteen V. So I get uh forty four U plus V.
Yeah.
There you go, so that's the partial derivative of Z with respect to U, so you see, it still depends on V, right, still depends on V. But that doesn't matter, I can have, I have partial derivatives of X that still depend on Y from up above, so, yeah. Now, let's look at the completely general, I mean, so in in general, you can do it like this, I think that's the best way to think about it in general, is you. Do the dependency, what depends on what, you know, the the Z could be a five variable function and each of these could be ten variable functions. But if you just wanna figure out the derivative of Z with respect to anything lower than it, then you just find, you just link the chains. Until you get to that variable and add all the chains together that get to that variable there. But if you wanna see it actually in general. Uh then this is it. This is the chain rule, general. Chain rule, and let's try to understand it, it's, it's, it's what I just described with the drawing, but essentially, so I have an any dimensional function. Where each of those input variables are any dimensional, okay, they have N dimensions, here have M dimensions. So the partial derivative of Z with respect to one of those, right, one of those um. Variables that each of these inputs depend on, so let's say like T two, if I wanna take the derivative with respect to that, J is two, so J is that variable. Then what it's gonna be is it's gonna be a sum, okay, of all the, of the partial derivative of Z. With respect to X I, so one of the I's, right, times the partial derivative of. Of uh that I that I chose with respect to the T that I chose. So to understand it based on our rule up here, right, so it for for up here would be D Z. D, well, so here it was T one, you can call it that, cuz S U, I mean, was the first. Can call it T one, doesn't really matter, it's just one of the variables, so the derivative of Z with respect to T one. Is gonna be the sum. I goes from one to M, M is the number of variables that the upper function is dependent on, X Y. So sum goes from one to M of the derivative of the main function with respect to every one of those, so see, in both cases, I need this. And this, I'm always gonna need the derivative with respect to that then. And then I'm gonna take the derivative, I'm gonna multiply that with the derivative of this thing with respect to the target variable. Like that, you might ask, well, what happens if I had another variable here, what if I had, you know, W and that depended on? That depended on nothing, just say, depended on nothing, or, yeah, well, then I would still do this. So I would get the the partial derivatives, like, say there was like a W in the equation here, whatever. Right, then I'd still, I could still get partial Z, partial W, but then partial W. Partial whatever looking for, let's say we're looking for U, well, that would be zero, so the whole term would go away. Right, so it does work in general, you don't have to look for any kind of mistakes like that, so you take the derivative with respect to all these input variables. And then these input variables, you multiply that with the derivative of these input variables with respect to their input variable, whatever you're targeting. So, there you go, hopefully that makes sense, um if this doesn't make sense, try the tree, tree is a good way, to visually do what I just said. Yeah.
Adam.
Yeah.
What you just, and it's like, if there was a third term, third variable like W with respect to neither of these.
Mm-hmm.
Basically, nothing, it would still, let's say, but we're still taking Z with respect to U, so we'd still have these two, but there's technically a plus zero there.
Yeah, the, it would just end up being a plus zero, yeah, so it wouldn't change anything, cuz that shouldn't change the derivative with respect to these things, adding a W.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Good, so. We will move on now then, that is the chain rule, I guess, no, you know, I should do some, I should do some practice of the chain rule. Um so let's try. Let's try this example from Horowitz's lectures, although I don't particularly like it, but that's fine, let. W equal E to the X squared, Y plus square root Z. Where X equals U squared V squared. Y equals U to the four over V cubed. And Z equals three U plus V. Okay, and we want to find uh di- W di- U. Okay, partial derivative of W with respect to U. So based on the chain rule, this is what that's gonna be equal to, I'm gonna quickly draw the dependence diagram, double, so this is our depend, dependence tree is what it's really called, so. W depends on three things, X, Y and Z, and each of those things depend on two things. U and V, U and V, U and V. Okay, and I need the derivative with respect to U, so I'm gonna have three terms here, the derivative with respect to X and then the derivative of that with respect to U. The derivative with respect to Y and the derivative of that with, well, times that derivative of that, the derivative of that with respect to to U. And then I'm gonna take the derivative with respect to Z and then the derivative of that. Multiplied in with respect to U, I'm gonna have three terms here, let's, let's write that out. This is what the general form would give you too, it's just a good way to do it visually, so partial W, partial X. Times uh partial X, partial U, and again, you can kinda think of it like, these are cancelling and we get partial W by partial U. So then I'm going to add on, not multiply, but add on, Omega, I mean, partial Omega. By partial Y times partial Y by partial U. And then finally, I'm gonna add on partial Omega by partial Z, and multiply that by partial Z, partial U. And we gotta find all these things, right, we gotta just find all these things and put them in, so let's start. Partial W with respect to the derivative of W with respect to X is gonna be, well, this is a constant. And it's just E E to the X squared, so it's just gonna be E to the X squared times Y plus square root of Z. Okay, times X squared, which is two X. And then I need to multiply, as you probably would expect already, to to have to multiply by the derivative of that thing up there, right, two X. Times the derivative of the thing here, so it's gonna be times, so that's, that is this. And then the next part is gonna be D X D U, which is gonna be, well, it's gonna be two U V squared. That's gonna be that, okay, I'm gonna add on to this. So I'm gonna, not gonna be able to do the colors now, but hopefully you'll understand, so partial W partial Y, well, um. E to the X squared is a constant on the side, uh Y plus that is, is just plus a constant. So we can just say it's just this, I think, or. It's just this, I think, yeah. E to the X squared, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm just gonna double check that, yeah, E to the X squared. Then I need the derivative of this with, the derivative of Y with respect to U. So that's just going to be times four U cubed over V cubed. So that was much shorter, and I'm gonna add on partial W partial Z, okay, so. It's just going to be E to the X squared is a constant on the side, and then the derivative of root Z is. Um, one over two root Z. Times the derivative of Z with respect to U, so we're doing, right, U, yeah, which is three.
Yeah.
And there we go. This is partial W partial U. You can simplify that, but whatever, that's just algebra, so, yeah, this is the answer, right there. So any questions about how I did that?
Hey, that's a final answer, right?
Yeah, you can simplify, I would simplify if it was on a test or something, but. So any, any questions?
Me, I should be at least.
Okay, sounds good, uh then we have implicit differentiation, which is next. All this works with three variables too, by the way, I mean, we just, we did an example with three variables here, but anything I'm saying extends to three variables as you would expect. Which hopefully is clear most of the time, I think most of the time it is clear, but maybe not always. Okay, then, yeah, let's move on to implicit differentiation, so let's say I have some function like this, uh you know. Z equals, so this is gonna be our implicit. Okay, so Z equals, I'll just come up with some example, unless there's an example here, um, yeah, here it is. I want a short one, this is way too long. Okay, I guess I'll try this one, uh Y equals five X squared. Plus three X Y minus two Y squared plus three X plus seven Y minus two. Okay, if I were to, so we, this is a multi-variable function, right? This is F of X Y, and so it's a function of X and Y. If I were to just choose Z equals zero, then I would have zero equals five X squared plus three X Y. Minus two Y squared plus three X minus seven Y minus two, and this would be a regular, this is kind of like a um. Choosing Z, so I'm choosing a a height above the graph, so I'm choosing like a horizontal slice, right, or a, what are those called? Contour, they make the contour map, they're each called, I forget, what are they each called, they're each called, I'm gonna find it.
They're lines?
Uh level curve, level curve, they're each called level curves, right? So we're taking a level curve at zero and this is a, you know, a single variable function, right, one output, one input, so. What if I were to ask, what's D Y by D X in this equation here, right? Well, I can use the fact that it is defined as a multi-variable function to help me, okay, so this is how I'm gonna use that. If I have um F of X Y equals Z and I'm choosing Z to be zero. I'm choosing Z to be zero, um then let's do these steps here. So what I'm, remember, I'm looking for D Y D Z, that's what I'm looking for, or a partial Y partial Z, that's fine. So if I take the derivative. Yeah, if I take the, again, I'm setting Z equal to zero, so I'm gonna say Z equals zero. If I take the derivative of both sides now with respect to X. Then I'm gonna get, I'm gonna get F X, so here, let me. Okay, yes, we need to use the chain rules, okay, so I'm gonna take the derivative of this with respect to X, so what's gonna happen is I have to use the chain rule here. So it's gonna be F X. No, hold on, that doesn't make sense, yes, it does make sense, nevermind, F X, okay, it's gonna be this, del F. Or partial F by partial X times the derivative of X with respect to X. Plus the derivative of F with respect to Y, times the derivative of Y with respect to X. Equals zero, that's what I'm trying to do, took just a second there, okay, so. This is what's happening, I took the derivative of both sides with respect to X, I just have to use the chain rule here though, because we're treating these like functions. And now I have a D Y D X and I can just rearrange for that, one thing to quickly note is D X by D X is one. So this is just partial F by partial X plus partial F by partial Y. Times partial Y by partial X equals zero. So in other words, partial Y by partial X, which is just D Y by D X. Is equal to negative um part, uh six, partial F by partial. X over partial F by partial partial Y. Okay, which tells us, this is the actual equation at the end that we're gonna use, D X is equal to, D Y D X is equal to. F X of X Y over F Y of X Y, so Y is. And this is the implicit differentiation formula that we use. When we're thinking about it as a multi-variable function, it's another perspective on differentiate, uh implicit differentiation.
Wait, honestly, that, this one kinda missed me, what, can you spell it for a bit?
Yeah.
Um so first of all, we set Z equal to zero.
Yeah.
Right, and you said it was a single output, single input, but there's two variables, so that's the first thing I didn't understand.
Well, but 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 also, but quickly before you move on, Y equals two X plus three. It has two variables, but this is a single variable function. Right, when you, when you say single variable, you mean the input, there's a single input. Do you know what I mean?
Not really, because like you said, Y equals two X plus three, but it's not Z equal two X plus three Y.
That's right, that's a two variable function, but this, but this right here. This has no Z in it, this is just X and Y.
Oh, I can't see what you're saying, yeah.
Right, there's there's no Z anymore, I said Z to zero. So it's just a single variable function now. And then this is the question we're trying to answer.
DY DX, oh, okay. Honestly, yeah, can you try this part again, cause it doesn't make sense to me.
Well, honestly, this part, understanding, understanding, like being able to use this final equation is is. Where the where the tricky trick is, but yeah, of course, like. I'm not, I'm reading off the notes here. From Horowitz's lectures, oops. Somehow flipped it and. Yeah, it's not crystal clear to me either, because the one thing that confuses me is just that X and Y aren't functions. But I guess it's okay, because we're just taking the derivative with respect to X, DF DX. So it is, they're not, we're not actually treating them as functions. We're treating them as functions of themselves, yeah?
Not so, this is, they're functions of themselves, cause like, okay, I was just saying, how did we end up with? Um, X with this, like, that's the implicit differentiation of X with respect to X. And then we have Y with respect to X and they're not their own functions, that's what kind of confused me, but okay.
Yeah, they're, they're not really their own functions, but just using the train, the chain rule here, just using the chain rule here, we can get. We can kind of treat them like they are, it's just that X is a function of X and Y is a function of X. Always, right, Y is a function of X, because just by looking up here, right, like I said, this is a single variable function as one input, which is X. Right, so we're looking at just this up here. But if you just think about it like the chain rule, I'm taking the derivative of this, so what's, what does F depend on, F depends on X and Y. Right?
Yeah.
So. Yeah, so you just add that, that doesn't help, because then why do we have this term here, take the derivative of X.
No, I was just thinking like, is it because Y is a function of X? That's why it's only a single input?
Yeah, yeah, Y is a function of X up here in here. It's not written like that yet, that's the point of diff, of implicit differentiation is that we probably can't write it like that very easily.
Okay.
If we could, then you just take normal derivative, but yeah, so the idea here is that. We're taking, um, we're finding a way to write DY by DX. And this is the way that we write, we write DY by DX. Negative, partial, yeah, go for it.
Yeah, that's, it's like, I I guess it's a bit delayed, sorry.
That's okay.
So I was just saying, in all of it, it's, we're just trying to find DY DX by like expanding our. Um.
Yeah.
Implicit, yeah, okay.
Yeah, so this is the implicit formula uh that we're gonna use. Let's try it here on that example that I gave up top, so if I have, um, if I have Z equals, I'll say F of. X Y equals uh five X squared. Plus three XY minus two Y squared. Plus three X. Should memorize more than one term at a time, seven Y minus two, there we go. Um, so if I wanna find DY by DX, I'm gonna do negative partial F. So the partial derivative at of F with respect to X over the partial derivative of F with respect to Y. So that's gonna be, okay, well, negative with respect to X is gonna be ten X. Um, plus three Y plus three over with respect to Y now. It's gonna be three X. Minus four Y. Plus seven. And there we go, that's, that is DY by DX in this situation. Right, and so, yeah, if if. Like this was handed to us as already, you can say equals zero, but if it wasn't handed to us like that, like what if we had a thing where. It would be. A little harder to figure out.
Be like Z equal like ten or some, something else, that's what I mean?
Well, like this here, if I say example, let, so sine. X, X Y Z equal Z tan inverse X to the Y. Equals zero. Oh, not equals, too many equal signs, supposed to be a plus. Um, and we're asked to find DZ by DX. Alright, DZ by DX. So this would be hard to figure out how to rearrange this for just Z and then take a partial derivative with respect to X, right, that would be hard. Guess like, these should be partials, you see how this is like, you can't rearrange this to get Z alone.
So it should that in the right above should also be partial derivative of Y and X or no?
No, cause this is um. Uh, because if I were to rearrange Z here, if I somehow could, it would be a function of both X and Y. But in this equation here, if I were to rearrange for Y, get Y alone, it would just be a function of X. So that's why it's. It doesn't actually matter, these mean the same thing, right, I mean, the variable names are the different thing, but yeah, I mean, there is, there is a reason I'm writing it differently. So this is because this would be a single variable function, this is still a multi-variable function.
Makes sense.
Good, so this is gonna be negative the fraction, um, so it's equal to zero, so just the derivative of this. I won't really call it, I guess I will call it F, F at FX of X Y Z. Over F Z of X Y Z, okay? So let's give it a try, negative times the fraction. Derivative with respect to X, okay? Well, that's just gonna be, okay, so cosine X Y Z times Y Z.
Yeah.
And then derivative with respect to X, well, it's gonna be Z times uh derivative of tan inverse.
Is that one over?
One over one plus X squared, that's what it is, I know, I can't remember it either, ever, so.
It's, and it's just specifically that one too sometimes, cause I can remember like that's.
No, I can't remember any of them, I'll be honest, I can't remember any of them, so I just have a paper here, that helps me.
That is fair.
Yeah, and then this is going to be X to the Y minus one. So that's that. So I multiply by the derivative of this inside which is X to the Y minus one, Y is a constant.
Yeah.
Then derivative with respect to Z, well, that's going to be similarly cos X Y Z X Y.
Shouldn't it be our Y outside in the numerator, cause it's in tip, so the function is um.
Oh, you're right, yeah, you're right, you're right. Just the Y minus one, yeah. You're right, there you go, um, and then derivative with respect to Z, well, that's just gonna be plus tan inverse. X to the Y.
Okay.
And yeah, that's good.
Wait, one, one more thing, is is it because is the the function is one plus, one over one plus X squared, right?
Where's one over one plus X squared?
No, I'm saying when the derivative of tan inverse is.
Oh, oh, yeah, the derivative of tan inverse is one, one over one plus X squared, yeah.
It's like, how did the Y get in there again?
Well, it's X to the Y, the thing that's inside of it is X to the Y.
Oh, it's the thing squared.
Yeah, it's this, this thing squared, yeah, exactly, so that's why it was X to the two Y in in the denominator. And again, you can simplify this, but I'm not gonna, that's as simple as.
It's okay, so essentially we just, if, what, whatever the implicit derivative is. I think we've been saying that too often now.
Yeah.
We're like with with respect to Z and X, we're always gonna take the. Implicit deri- derivative of X and. Of the other variable, whichever two variables we're finding the, yeah. Basically, that's what I'm trying to say, that's literally what I was trying to say, man.
Yeah. I understand, I understand, yeah, that's what you're trying to say, so. The derivative, the partial derivative of F with respect to X on the top and the partial derivative of, well, actually, it doesn't always have the X, but but the bottom one on the top, the top one on the bottom.
Yeah, we.
Yeah, good, we got it.
Yeah.
So yeah, and that's the end of my notes, I have some more uh Horowitz questions though, so we can finish those. Um, but, yeah, other than that, that's the end of the like. Information for the section, that's like the end of the content content, so let's just try a couple more of these Horowitz questions that I have here. So. Um, I have find. Partial F, partial T, oh, this is a chain rule problem. Um, and not a very hard one, so skip it, um, here's an implicit, let's do this implicit one. So X E to the Y plus Y E to the X minus two X squared Y equals zero. Find DY by DX, so we're gonna use implicit differentiation for this. DY by DX is gonna be negative, partial derivative with respect to X of X Y of F of X Y. Again, we're kind of treating this like F of X Y, that's the idea, so if this, if for example you had a five here, you have to move the five over. Right, so you want it to equal zero and set that equal to F of X Y, that was when we derived it, we said that F of X Y has to be zero.
Yeah.
So that, um, then it's gonna be partial derivative of F with respect to Y. Of X Y, so. Partial derivative of F with respect to X, so negative this fraction is going to be, okay, E to the Y. Plus Y E to the X. Minus four X Y. Okay?
Yes.
Fine with me. Yeah, looks good, and then partial derivative with respect to Y. Is going to be X E to the Y plus. Uh, E to the X. Minus two X squared, that's. That's it. And that's right, that's DY DX. Yeah.
And again, it's because the the general idea is that Y is. A function of X, why we can put it back as DY TX, like it.
Yeah, yeah.
Ultimately that.
No, no, that, that, that's right, yeah, that's right. Okay, um. I have another chain rule problem, do you wanna see another chain rule problem?
Yeah, but one more thing, when you take a, we're finding like, let's say, D. D Z DU and there's like, you know, like the tree you have like, D. Yeah, let's, yeah, not, not that one, and either one's fine, let's say you're asked to find, is that Z at the top, yeah? So like, D Z D DS. Which one is it though, like, do you, in, cause you're adding two in um partial differentiations, but the end is a, is it a? Is it the symbol or is it just D?
Uh, so you're, are you asking, you're asking just about the symbol or how you do it?
Yeah, in the end, no, no, I know how to do it, I'm just saying like, you see.
Yeah. Uh, this would be partial Z partial T. Because then you can ask another, you, you know, if you wanna figure out if it's a partial or or a full derivative, we can ask another question, well, what's partial Z partial S?
Yeah.
It's another question you can ask, right?
So as long as there's like two variables, at least, it's like, yeah, alright, that makes sense. Well, what if you put the X for D Z DX, that's not enough, right, like they can't access that.
D Z DX, no, you could do that, that would just be partial Z partial X.
How do you find that though?
Uh, well, let's take a look here, uh, just look at this equation here, so partial Z. Remember, X is a function of U and V, but it doesn't, the U and V are, U and Vs aren't in there.
Yeah, okay.
So this would just be two X minus Y, that's it, two X minus Y.
Okay, that makes sense, alright, thanks for that, sorry guys.
Yeah, no problem, no problem, don't be sorry, yeah, it's good questions.
Also, sometimes questions aren't good to be solved, because sometimes a test isn't that hard, so.
Yeah, that's true.
Do an easy question, because sometimes our questions kinda threw you off, okay?
Okay, let's try this last uh chain rule problem that I have, so this is the last one from Horowitz's no uh. Problems from the section, so Z equals E to the X squared Y, uh, X equals the square root of UV. Y equals one over V and Z equals nothing, there's no Z. So we're asked to find D Z DY or partial Z partial Y. Uh, and then partial Z partial V. So partial Z partial Y, I don't have to really worry about that too much, this is just going to be, um. Yeah, this is just going to be um, E to the, well, it's gonna be E to the X squared Y. Times the derivative of the top with respect to Y, which is just X squared. So that's all it was for that, I don't know why that was even part of it. I have a feeling that's actually a U, and my writing is just bad. So U is what we're actually interested in, not V, that makes more sense. Um, so to do that, I'm gonna have to take the partial derivative of Z, let's do it, do our dependence tree quickly, so Z. Is dependent on X and Y, both of these, well, X is dependent on U and V. Y is just dependent on V, no U, so if I'm trying to take the partial derivative with respect to U, there's only one path to get there. Partial derivative of Z with respect to X times the partial derivative of X with respect to U. So, exactly what I just said, there you go. And I'll work that out, so partial derivative of Z with respect to X is gonna be E to the X squared. Y times the partial derivative with respect to Y is two Y, two X Y. Times the partial derivative of X with respect to U, well, that's just going to be uh V over the squ- uh, two times the square root of UV. Uh, which can simplify to E to the X squared Y, X Y over square root of UV. I missed a V, there, yep, um, and then finally here. Uh, you, you probably, yeah, you, you should put it in like in terms of U and V, so we said X. Was the square root of UV, so notice that X and the square root of UV are gonna cancel. Also notice that Y and V are gonna cancel, right, Y is one over V, that's gonna cancel. So we're just left with E X squared Y, which I can then write. Um, well, X squared Y is gonna be, well, X squared is gonna be UV, Y is over V, so E to the U. Somehow that is not. Oh, uh, never mind, um. Z equals E to the X squared Y. That doesn't really make sense, why would Z be part of it, D Z by DU is equal to Z? No, that. I think we're just gonna leave it as E to the, E to the U.
Yeah, cause I honestly spaced out for that part.
It's equivalent, it's fine, yeah, so the answer here is Z, but that doesn't really make sense to me at all.
Wait, so they tried, what was the question asking for, D Z DU and D Z?
Well, D Z DU, but we didn't do D Z DB.
So all of that was just D Z DU?
That's all D Z D, yeah, exactly.
Okay.
So now for V, we're gonna do the partial derivative of Z with respect to X and then times the partial derivative of X with respect to V. Um, and then we have the partial derivative of Z with respect to Y times the partial derivative of Y with respect to V. And we have that, there we go, so. Then I will do that, so partial derivative of Z with respect to X times the partial derivative of X with respect to V. Plus partial derivative of Z with respect to Y times the partial derivative of Y. Uh, it's actually just a full, a full derivative of Y with respect to V. Hmm, okay, that is.
It's a full derivative, is Y is just as V, right?
Yeah, Y is just a function.
It's such a simple thing, but it makes a sense when you think about, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I know, it's, it, it's just, when you have new notation, it's. An added difficulty that really shouldn't be there, so that's why at first I was just using Ds, but partials do come in handy. So. Um, I know that. I thought that was two for a second, partial, uh, partial Z partial X is what I need, I already know that's E to the X squared Y two X Y, so. E to the X squared Y times two X Y, now the derivative of X with respect to V is just going to be. Uh, U is a constant, so it's gonna be U over two square root UV. That's fine, plus the derivative of Z with respect to Y, so Z is. That's fine, plus the derivative of Z with respect to Y, so Z is up here, E to the X squared Y, so it's gonna be. E to the X squared Y times. X squared. Uh, yeah, I think that's right. Plu- uh, times, I mean, not plus, D Y D V, uh, which is just gonna be negative one over V squared. So now I will just, uh, sub in everything that I know that I can do, it's gonna be E to the U. Times two. The two here and the two here cancels, the X and the root UV cancels, and the Y, no, that doesn't cancel, it was U over V. Plus E to the U, X squared is uh, UV. That's a minus and divided by V squared, so those cancel. Um, oh, and that's zero.
What was Y, like, what is Y, cause is 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 X just root to U?
X is root UV.
Okay.
So X cancels with root UV, that's zero.
No, I was just like, so you, didn't you sub it in right here? Says it shouldn't be X squared. Just. U V squared?
Yeah, yeah, well, you you mean for this, this X squared right here?
Any X squared, that's there.
Oh, well, E to the U is just here from E to the U because it's gonna be E X squared Y is. E to the UV over V.
Oh, oh yeah, that makes sense.
Right, and then this, this X squared was UV, but this was also V squared on the bottom, so they canceled.
Oh, yeah, that makes sense though.
Uh, this is just zero though, which is not the answer, although he did not simplify all the way to the end, he did not simplify, so. Um. Interesting, okay, well, whatever, that's fine, that makes sense as an answer, but it's not like a problem, but zero, just interesting that it ends up being zero.
So wait, so the entire gist of implicit differentiation, which is what we're doing, right, is just?
This was chain rule, this was chain.
Oh, oh, for this, sorry. Yeah, um, the entire, the gist of implicit differentiation is just setting our. FX or FX Y, sorry, FX Y and Z to zero to solve for. Any like partial derivative or derivative that they add.
Any, any like derivative of the input variables with respect to other input variables, so like D Z DX, those are both input variables.
Meaning? Sorry, any input, when you say input and output, I'm just like, which one, what are you talking about?
Well, so like here, like this function is a function of X, Y and Z. Right, so if I were looking for the derivative of Z with respect to Y, I would use implicit differentiation. The derivative of Z with respect to X, that's exactly what we did here. So the in- inside the input variables, if you're finding the derivative with respect to those variables, then you use implicit differentiation.
So you know how usually you have like a. The function is actually like a another like. Variable, like Y is equal to X, or that is equal to X plus Y, if it's a function that is X, Y and Z. Wouldn't there be like four variables to equally?
But one of them is an output variable, so it does, we only care about the input vari- like, when you, when I say a function of three variables, I'm ca- I'm saying there's three inputs.
Yeah.
There is a fourth variable, which is the output, but we don't call it a four variable function, we call it a three variable function, cause there's three inputs.
Yeah, that makes sense now. So, and the the so that's what implicit is, to find one of the input um, variables differentiation with respect to another, basically.
With another input variable, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So if you have a function like this right here, right?
Yeah. I can. I peacefully now.
Okay, good. Good, I'm glad that I gave that to you.
Yeah.
Okay, um, so, yeah, then that otherwise is all the content that I have for today, this was a shorter one, but, um. But it's also, you know, not too much on the test, um, and yeah, that's that, so I'm here for a little bit longer, if people have questions, of course.
Wait.
Uh, just to confirm, um, the reason we got zero for D Z di- uh, di V. Is because if you were to plug in X and Y into the main function. V cancels out, so it's not actually, doesn't actually have any effect on the.
Would you? Yeah, you're right.
If you plug it in there, V does, doesn't even involved in the function in the first place.
Uh, you're right, that makes sense, because look here, uh, I'll just, I'll I'll draw it out.
What was he saying?
Good point, yeah, that's, this is what I'm showing here, so E to the X squared Y, like I said before, is E to the U.
Yeah.
So Z does not depend on V at all. Which makes sense, which makes, which makes sense why we got derivative of zero, Z does not depend on V at all.
That was a good eye.
Is E to the U, yeah, makes sense.
That makes sense.
So we got derivative of zero.
That's cool. Kudos to whoever, like, who was that, Cameron?
Cameron, yeah, yes.
Good, good job, but.
I didn't think that was like a grand insight, but.
I feel like it was, like, I was just like, huh.
Yeah, I didn't see it.
Yeah, I was just like, that makes sense, that's an engineering eye right there, yeah, good job.
W, like, if you, you could technically just plug in the, the like, X and Y, if you know, like, if you. If it's one of those ones where it's like, here's Z in terms of X and Y, here's X and Y in terms of other two variables, you can still just. Replace X and Y in the main function with your functions.
Or differentiate?
Give it the given ones, and then do it, but it's probably a lot more complicated, which is why you do it this way.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, no, because.
Again, for insights like this, maybe you see, oh, one of these variables actually isn't even involved in the function. When you plug it in, so.
I mean, so you know what you're working towards, but I think what I was like stuck on a question, we had like. Lawn off lawn something, and I was like, how do I solve this, like, if you guys know, let me know. And since like, I think it was.
Well, that'd be just a chain rule, wouldn't it?
What did, cause it's, it wasn't a derivative though, it was just like, I think I was inputting, I think it was my solution. And it's lawn of lawn X plus one.
I remember doing lawn of lawn something, yeah.
You, it's, that's still valid as a, as a function, I think that just means that lawn has to be.
Greater than zero.
Lawn, what's lawn one, lawn has to, the, the function inside, if it's lawn lawn. Then lawn, then the lawn inside the lawn, that's a weird way to say that, the lawn inside the lawn has to be greater than one. So that it means the lawn, the, the value inside, the double lawn has to be greater than E. Because if it's E, you get one, and then you get lawn one, you get zero, so.
Wait, wait, isn't lawn, isn't lawn zero the problem and not lawn one? Right?
No, the problem.
Lawn one is zero.
The, the problem is, is that. Oh, just graph it, what we're saying is that, the fu- lawn function, the lawn function looks like this, it's defined not. For numbers greater than zero, right, so lawn of lawn X. Has to be defined for greater, numbers greater than one, because you see, if, if you were to put in, if you were to put in X equals, let's say. Uh, you know, negative uh, or X equals a half here, that result is negative, you can't put a negative function, negative value into the lawn function.
Into lawn.
So it has to be greater than one, right, so here.
Every time you input a lawn, you'll probably move, I don't know, do you keep moving over by one step?
No, but it looks like next one's E, next one's E.
You just made something exist. Try that one more. Ah, that lawn. We should give us, we need some math friends, so we can be like, hey, did you just come, did you realize this?
Yeah.
I think not.
So next one, probably, probably E squared.
E to the two, E squared.
No, not E squared, it's.
That's like E cubed.
Is it two E squared, that's twelve E squared, is it two E squared, it's fourteen point something, no. Um.
Wait, it's, no, it's not forty point something, it would be fourteen minus three.
But I don't know what that would mean then.
Which is that?
Well, let's think about it for a second, it has to be greater, the input has to be greater than E, so it has to be greater than lawn E. So, no.
To get, well, to get zero out of a lawn, you need the value to be one, which means lawn lawn has to be one.
Lawn lawn has to be at least one.
Cause one would give you zero. And that's what we're looking, we're looking for like what the X value is when I hit zero, and then lawn lawn zero, that means the inside of lawn lawn. Has to be. Uh, one as well, right?
Something like that.
I don't know.
See, that's what, that's why we need, that's why we need the, the, the M boys, we need to have some.
What are you guys trying to figure out?
We're, we're, we're trying to figure out this, why, so like lawn X greater than zero, lawn lawn X has to be greater than one.
Okay.
Lawn 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 X has to be greater than E, so it has to be greater than the, the, the last zero here. So why is the next thing fifteen point one five four, why is that the next intercept?
Yeah, we were.
So lawn lawn lawn, lawn 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 X would have to be greater than fifteen point one five four. This one's E, but I don't really know why, it's, I don't know even know how to get.
E just discovered a new, I don't know, I'd be fine though, if no one thought of it.
What's that divided by?
What, fifteen for how much?
Fifteen point five four.
Five point five seven.
Yeah, not.
What is that, what is that?
Nothing, no, nothing, or one five four, but nothing.
Is that like a root of something, I don't know, maybe it's not linear, so it doesn't, won't make any sense.
No, but there's probably, there, almost definitely is some way to figure that out in terms of E, um. I just, I can't think of it the second, but I'll think about it, I'll try to figure.
It's fun though, it's fun, it's a nice thing that we found here.
Yeah.
We, we, we're gonna get a Nobel Prize, guys.
Yes, we will, for sure.
It's gonna be so good, and it's gonna take us, they, they're gonna be so enthusiastic. That they're gonna sponsor our entire education as well, because they're like, you know, guys, we're, these are the minds that we need, yeah.
Okay, let me, let me, yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, you know, if anybody else here has just like questions before we go, you know, feel free to, feel free to ask any questions you have. Or.
I don't have a question about the math that we just did, but I have, do have an issue question, do you, cause you're a math guy, more than I am anyway. Do you know what, uh, like, uh, what are they called, Fourier series?
Uh huh.
Fourier series.
Fourier series, yeah.
People, people tend to use those to draw pictures mathematically, using like some graphing. Probably not decimals, cause I think it's very intensive, I don't know.
Yeah, not decimals, but with, uh, you probably saw the three blue one brown video on Fourier series, or you saw something.
No, 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 I just.
Was it linear algebra?
I've seen like, it's one of those things where it's like, I might have seen like a snippet of it.
Mm hmm.
And I know what a Fourier series is sort of like, in that you can use it to draw things, but.
We didn't see Fourier series in linear algebra, yeah.
As you iterate the series more and more, you approach closer and closer to the set shape that you've noticed.
Yeah, so, uh, if I look at, well. GIF.
Is it, is it, is it the definition of music?
That would be nice, but look here, so if you have like spinning, essentially of spinning vectors, and I don't know what it's drawing, what is it drawing? Can't tell yet, but spinning vectors, each spinning at some integer frequency. Are creating an image as they go around, I don't know what, I still can't tell.
You're, uh.
All my things in the way?
Might slightly block it, I don't know if you can.
There, is that better?
Alright, well, this one we can see what it's gonna.
You can see what it's drawing, right, so you see that red, that red, I'm pointing with my finger, that red point there. No, but it's, it, that red dot is, is, is tracing the outline, right, so you can kind of imagine a bunch of. Uh, phasers in there, uh, like what we have in, uh, in uh, circuit analysis, so each of these things are kind of like phasers. They're spinning at a certain frequency. So you see, I think right at the end, there's like a tip, there's like a pen at the tip, and each of these phasers are spinning at an integer frequency. And together, by just tuning the initial size and uh, direction. So you can kind of think of it like amplitude and phase difference of the phasers, uh, you can tune it to create a, um. Picture.
Image, that's kind of.
They have a phase, they have a fa- uh, uh, angle slider there, I guess, cause you're right, it's like a phaser.
Yeah, exactly.
They're like changing the angle.
Exactly, that's kind of like as time goes forward, but yeah.
You aren't still recording, right, cause I think people are gonna watch it after.
I'm still recording.
People are gonna watch this after, they're like, what the heck is this?
Yeah, I know you can get them, you can, I mean, it's probably very hard to make a really complicated one, but I know that you can make them as complicated as you want.
And you just need more, you just need more phasers to get it more accurate.
It might suffer from the thing where it's like, lines can't cross, though I don't know if that's true, just looking at this, it seems to be like.
I think they can cross.
Maybe, I think they must be.
They can.
Because. There must be some limitation, because it's, obviously if it's spinning around in a, on a disc, there's probably some.
But it, it can, it can do it, it's gonna do it here.
That's, they can't lift up the pen on this, which is.
Uh, that's true, they can't lift up the pen, that's true, yeah, there's no way to lift up the pen, so you see, they can cross though, they're gonna, they cross just now, right, so.
No, this one's way more advanced though.
Yeah, this is, that's, that's, that's actual Fourier, that's like supposed to be Fourier, that's the, that's the idea there, that's.
What are they drawing, uh, I was thinking back on the, I was thinking if it was a combination of more than one, um, like. What you call those, like constants, I tried, how, what was the cause of, what was the value again, cause I got, I tried pi plus E to the one.
Oh, this, here, okay, here, this, to figure this out?
Oh, no, okay, then I'm, uh, I was just trying something like, I was trying pi over two, like I was trying pi plus E. To see if it was like, it would formulate something, but I guess.
You can't figure it out, I guess, if you, if you just took a second to like write out the inequality, you could probably find out what it was.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't really have the mental energy to do it this exact second.
Nah, I'm gonna actually finish the other, I have to go watch the physics now, right?
Yeah.
Why is there more work towards the end of this semester, yeah, it's pretty dark. And there's a.
Is it, it could be this.
What?
I have an idea of what it might be, but I wanna test it out on my calculator first.
I mean, we could, we could search it.
It's E to the power of E, and that makes a lot of sense now.
E to the E, oh, okay.
Because E to the E, lawn of, is E, lawn of E, and lawn of one is zero.
Okay.
Okay.
We solved it, well, you solved it, I'm not gonna take any credit for that, yeah, there you go.
No, every, I think every iteration, and every iteration of lawn would be E to the.
E.
E to the E.
E to the E to the E, increasing, maybe.
So it's basically just undoing each log, that's it.
I say lawn of this. The next.
You did it, cause I was just like, I was trying pi, I was like.
E to the E to the E is. Oh, how big, how big is E to?
Kind of big number, but.
How big is E to the E to the, oh, it's.
Shouldn't be that big.
No, it shouldn't be that big, three, how many digits is that, then it's a six.
That shouldn't be right.
Just.
Oh, no, one, sorry, this is.
Make the, make the uh, green line a function, and then just say like, when, at that point, like what is the value?
At what, oh, yeah, okay.
Make it F of E, equal to lawn, 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 and then see what it gives you.
No, but I wanna know, I, I wanna know when this equals zero. I wanna know when.
Try, you just, just try putting it, E to E to E is the X value and see if it says.
Like F of E to the E to the?
Yeah.
It gives me zero, which is.
Okay, so it is, it is a.
It is, it does make sense, yeah.
What type of, I don't know what type of, um, function, like what would you call that as a function, that's sort of more than exponential.
It's tetration, it's called tetration.
It did.
Called tetration, okay.
What about, it, it seems similar to that, you remember that latex video that you showed me, and the guy had something like decreasing. Um, decreasing fractions, where it's like one plus half, and then half is half plus.
Oh, like, and adding down, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it seems like something like that.
This, I guess, similar, yeah.
Well, good job thinkers, right, I think it's.
Time for you to go, okay.
Thank you guys, yeah.
Yeah, bye Joshua.
Wait, tell me that you did pause the recording, cause like.
No, I, I, I'm still recording. I gotta get the math talk in here, I gotta get the math talk.
Yeah, someone, they're gonna see the end of it, these great minds.
Yeah.
Yeah, alright, guys, I'll see you.
Bye.
Yeah.
See ya, see ya, bye.
Take care, guys.
See ya.
Yeah.
Okay. Just us.
So badum.
I have nuggets.
What'd you say?
Well, I just said I have chicken nuggets, um, but what, what were you talking about here, I left for like. I left for a second and then came back and then you talked about.
Uh, yeah, here on the screen right here, with the lawn, lawn, lawn.
Yeah.
We were just trying to figure out like, if I zoom back in here, like, so. I get rid of most of this stuff. If I had like lawn X, and then I had lawn of lawn X, it makes sense that lawn of lawn X. Has to be, the X value has to be greater than one, because if it was less than one, you'd be putting in a negative value into the lawn. And you can't do that, so it's be greater than one, but then lawn of lawn of lawn has to be greater than, my mouse is being weird. Lawn of lawn of lawn has to be greater than E, uh, X equals not E to the E, but X equals E. Because that's where you get zero for lawn of lawn. So you gotta be greater than zero, and then we were, the confusion that we were having is the next higher number was fifteen. Point one five four, which we didn't know what that was, but it ended up being E to the E. Which kind of also makes sense. Not super important, but just sort of figuring that out, oh, Joshua's back.
Nah, I just saw, I was just like, what's happening, I was like, did that new question come up?
No, no.
Cause like, yeah, but I was saying, nah, doesn't seem like, yeah.
It, was this like, was this a, a question though, or was this?
No, it was a question that I came, I saw, because I remember trying to substitute back a function, and it had lawn, lawn X plus one. And I was like, how do I simplify this, and so I brought it to everyone's attention, and like the great engineers we are. And I was like, how do I simplify this? And so I brought it to everyone's attention, and like the great engineers we are.